Interstate or the interchange sign. Again, we had asked that be, that come through the planning commission as a part of the protocol 1077. It reads that they're subject to final review by the planning commission following requiem data by the planning zoning department. And I think the concern there was, that's just one more loop for somebody to go through. From the standpoint of the planning commission, I think we were thinking that it does, it is a, I just think we thought it would be better if we did have a chance to review that as part of the overall undesigned of that place and rather than just letting it be directed without by either the department alone or just signing off and saying, well, if it's okay, it's because it's there. And the planning commission approved it that way, but to our tent, my intention that that seems like an extra loop. Is it really necessary? So I'll bring you back to the council for your consideration as to whether it be only a sign off by the planning department or that it comes to the, comes to the planning commission for their review before the, the department signs off.
If I might make my point, just from a legalistic analysis, by requiring it to go to the planning commission, you are exposing it to a public meeting prior to approval. That way, because it's a really big sign, I mean, want to consider. But is this in our district or the state's district?
It's ours.
It'd be in our right of way for that.
Yeah, it's all in your control.
So I guess we're not.
Well, I can, I'm, I'm of the opinion that we should have it that way, but I'm, I'm only one person.
First of all, Chris, I think that's the right idea. I mean, we can, there, there gives people a chance to comment on it, bring up concerns. So I think that's fine.
Everybody, is that, okay, just review then. We're leaving that as it is. We're leaving the, the HPC making recommendations on the historic area. The exemption, we're going to have Chris rewrite and bring back permits, the same permits we're leaving in. We haven't finalized anything on the window signs and signs yet. The technical corrections, I think, we're, we're all okay with, mostly just some typos and the same thing. All right, well, there are a couple of other things in this sign ordinance that I'd like to bring to your attention that are different from the present or past sign ordinance. As you probably saw, we have updated the language considerably with regard to the type of signs and definitions. We have, in the old ordinance, there was a section that controlled window signs and window signs on fences. We have removed that. Window signs, meaning, you know, things on the inside of a window, we're going to control them back. And the fences, before there was the signs, the fences are only temporary and so forth in the planning commission. So policing that's difficult at best. So, again, full disclosure, that's been removed. Quitter reel, now, if there's a problem with that, you all have to speak up about either of those listening that you mentioned. We are putting in a new requirement, whether enforcement's had a question, but we had asked that political signs be removed in a specified timeframe after a campaign. We have really expanded the number and the size of the signs. If you look at the chart, it's one of the things, we're talking about how we put limits, but we've also made some changes and we've added sizes and numbers of signs as well. A major change is that we've allowed signs closer to the right of way. Signs cannot, you know, encroach on the right of way, but in terms of their proximity to it, generally, it's always been back about ten feet or so. What we have done is allow that to come much, much closer to the right of way, I think, within a foot. And we have, but we have also required that no sign may be in the, in the site triangle of when you're entering or exiting parking area or right of way or something such as that, so that it does limit where signs will be. But in the interest of providing greater exposure or greater visibility for signs and businesses, they're allowed to be closer than what they were in the old ordinance. You know, if that causes concerns for people, you need to speak up. We have, we're also now requiring temporary signs to have permits. They put a time limit on the number of, and the amount of time that a temporary sign can be out there and the size. And if you look at that, that's in section.
Twenty-five, zero, eight-two.
There are a number of portable signs around town already. I don't know if you realize that, but, and there are some temporary signs that people just got and put up. What we're looking for is that the sign ordinance, we're saying signs really ought to be of a more substantive nature, that they should be more permanent, you know, for security purposes, for safety purposes and all kinds of things. But we also realize that businesses and organizations and others will have a need for a special product or a special event or something like that that's going to go on that they want to call attention to. So we allow for that here under portable and temporary signs in business and industrial zoning districts. Now, we've got a number in here of ninety days in a calendar year. Whether that's too few or too many, there needs to be more than that, less than that, ask for all's to come up with what's a prudent number here, but the point is that we try not to have, you know, temporary sign out there three hundred and fifty days out of two hundred and sixty-five. So that's, that's important. We've also talked about limiting the size of them, the height and so forth, to kind of make sure that they don't compete on other kinds of things. And we've asked that they're going, that there's to be permit with business or, or an organization that wants to promote an event, to let us know and put down, okay, we're going to put a sign out beginning March fifteenth, we'll take it down on, you know, April thirtieth because our event is going to be April the twenty-eighth. And we, we want six weeks' notice, let people know it's coming. We, the non-for-profits are, are asked to, they're not required to give us the permit, to actually come in for a permit because, you know, we don't necessarily have all the churches come in for notice of their bizarre or all the schools come in for, you know, school play or something like that. But we do want them to comply with the sign work in terms of sizes and locations and that kind of thing. That's, that's a change and that's a big change. And I want you all to be aware of that. We have put some restrictions on our premise signs as well. And we've added here, I think this is news in that area, the actual inspection, that's a new section. In the previous.
We've allowed inspection on some of the electric signs.
But we've expanded it to, we have expanded, so we have added inspection here and, and we have sections that we can, if a sign is improper or unsafe or some other problems, we've got a way that we can ask for it to be removed and to remove it if it, if necessary. And there is also a penalty that can be assessed if our owners of the signs are not compliant with the ordinance or with safety or inspections or any of that. So those are some substantive additions to the sign ordinance. And with that, I'll maintain some questions or comments or concerns. Those, those significant things that I just mentioned is, do you think those are prudent or imprudent or need to be changed or?
Within ten percent, you said there are, there's going to be time, but how do you all use it so many days out here?
That's what we've got in here, yes.
With that permit being needed, how do you keep track of the days that they use it?
Well.
I don't like giving charge of permits and things like that, but a lot, also, not only you can't track the days of usage, but you, they don't, maybe don't know what the specifications are on the setback or things like that.
Well, that's what the ordinance is for, we'll say that. One, you, the permit would, you would come in and say, I'm going to have a new product coming out and I know it's coming out in, in April and I'm going to have special signage for that new product. And you know this because dealers are telling us coming and get career and so forth, and you know this in February. You come in and you say, okay, I'm going to, I want inspection, I want a permit for a temporary sign, you know, run from April the first to May fifteenth. And you can put that down and put down, I'm going to run it from April the first to May fifteenth. And if you or somebody else, or city people are out looking and the sign's still up there on June first, well, we know it's past due and we need to tell them to say, you've got to take your sign down. So that's how you would, I mean, wouldn't police it in the sense that you go around and inspect it all the time, but you'd have a way of knowing if somebody's being abusive of it or not.
One problem there is a lot of time to save, do you, because we, we receive complaints time to time now. Sometimes temporary signs too close to the airbound road, a full stop sign, I can't see past it. And then, when, they don't look at the ordinance until we give them a problem and ask them if they, you know, if they're safe or safe. This way they would know where located it. I'm not saying charge people, you know, just make them informed.
Yeah, I think it's more a matter for us, for the city as well, of just not have, I mean, if you've got a sign ordinance, you've got a sign ordinance for a reason or purpose, otherwise why have one at all? And if you have a sign ordinance and you let temporary signs be up anytime, anywhere, then you don't have a sign ordinance.
I guess my, I mean, maybe it's really minor, maybe, but, you know, how much time are we going to spend every month granting permits for temporary signs, you know, getting this? And then who's going to do it? Do they have the time to do that?
You're already permitted temporary signs and there's already a time limit for that. What happens is a lot of people don't come to begin permits. And another thing is with this going through and the changes, we haven't been enforcing.
So they have permanent temporary signs.
There are a lot of permanent temporary signs.
There's, there's a lot, I agree.
And we'd like to enforce it, but since it's gone on so long, a lot of them, quite frankly, are on the linkage. And, you know, I feel bad for businesses that lost business because of that construction project, but I can point to six or seven of them out there that never came in and got a permit and they've been out there for two years. You know, we'd like to see those things handled through this temporary sign thing. And once it's in place, we can let those businesses know, here's a copy of the ordinance, you're in violation right now and, you know, in sixty days or whatever the number is if you has a sign, we'll be back to see if this is still here.
And, you know, we want businesses to use them to sell the product and infect the business. We want them to do that, but we don't want to be punished.
I mean, with a lot of the trash and grass ordinances and things that we do, we send out letters and saying, you have so long to do this, and we go back and inspect to see if it was done. If not, the street department goes out and does it in charge of the property. So we're keeping track of that department anyway for things a lot more than the temporary signs that are out there.
You both have time to repeat the claim to the joint business.
Yeah, I, I think that's the other part of, of the sign ordinance is, is everybody's, you know, we're all kind of somewhat responsible for one another a little bit here. And, you know, what I do with my property also affects happens to you and yours. And so this is trying to provide some, well, some expectations that are reasonable and some expectations that we think all people know and, and should be respectful of everyone else's property and as well as their desire to advertise their stuff. Would it, it's, so do we need to have further modifications of what we've talked about? Is the ninety days something that's a reasonable number or do we need to have a larger number there?
I think ninety days is perfect.
I think ninety days is reasonable.
It's, you know, it's, it's four, you know, you have four quarters in the year and it gives you a few weeks each quarter if you want to do it that way. You could do all ninety at once or you could half and half or however you want to do it. But, you know, the only other, the only other way that I would, if, if we moved it, the number I think that I could reasonably see moving into would be a hundred and twenty and that would be like thirty per quarter, not just thirty per, you know, it wouldn't be just thirty per quarter, but it could be divided up that way, whatever the end lines. But ninety's fine with me too. I'm just suggesting if you think that's too small, we can make that adjustment, I guess. Okay, well, with that then, we know what we've amended tonight, I can say. We know that we've got some further thinking to do on the size of this, of signs and the number of signs and so forth on the chart and the language for the other exemptions. Would it be reasonable to pass this on second reading with the changes that we have to make as amended?
I think that would be the right thing to do.
And then, if we, Chris, if you could bring back the next time, get us a, provided we all agreed to this. No one's up in, but my thought would be that the changes could be made. You could make recommendations with regard to the language in that one section and we would know that our meeting with a new copy in front of us, new language, everything there, whatever adjustments we want to make further with the same copy. So I would move, I would move second, I would move second reading as amended, pass as amended.
Second motion.
Need for the discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those same vote, extra unanimous, second reading. Thank you, gentlemen.
If, with your permission, now, if there's anybody in the audience who wants to address what we've discussed, I would think that the appropriate.
Absolutely.
Year from now, we deliberate for next step.
Discussion for the, oh yes, Mr. Edelman.
I'll, I'll just quickly ask one question. On the discussion that you had on the five signs on the sign, one sign out there, wouldn't it be maybe beneficial, because like you said, you can't read them now, nobody remembers what's out there, but what if there were an electronic sign and those businesses scrolled across? Something like that, I think, might take care of that situation. You might actually see the businesses rather than that conglomerate on the sign. Maybe an option for that?
That's permitted now. That's not permitted in current ordinance.
It would be permitted.
Before the getting, that's your variance. But the proposed ordinance does allow. Yeah, that's what I meant to say. It's, it's permitted in this ordinance. What you're asking for is.
Yeah, I was going to say that might be, maybe an option on that. Okay, thanks.
Mr. Edelman. Jeff, I just want to check with Congress, just, and this is Meyer, but in the, when you were approaching the garage sale signs, temporary type signs, we do an event every year that we bring people in from five, six grand economies and we always place signs like those garage sale signs out at various intersections of the way. Is that going to be effective with this ordinance? Do I have to get a permit for that or is that going to be a?
Does the chamber holder of non-for-profits?
Non-for-profits, yes.
Wouldn't you be exempted?
Oh, yeah. Folks, thanks for your hard work on this. I know you've worked diligently on this for two years.
Well, I have committed to.
Well, if some of the issues have been out there, I know you're trying to do it right there.
And I would like to make, you know, well, it's been, Glenn has been all the week and especially even during the weekdays, you know, it's green, we spend a lot of time there too.
Yes, yes.
So, what I mean, we're a few others, several thousand dollars later, we're getting posted in.
You have quality days.
Time and money, time and money. Anything to me about your audience? Come on, Sean.
I have nothing to say, bleep or nothing.
Okay, maybe, I got, I've got a question for you, Sean. On the interstate interchange sign, that could be problematic for, for the planning commission to review it. What would you see problematic and possibly a problem with that?
At first, I was against it just because the ultimate goal was to streamline this and free up everybody. But the more that Glenn talked about it and him and I talked about it on the side, when you get into a, you know, a high-rise sign like that, it's probably a good thing to make sure it's a competent company coming in to put it up. It, you know, if it's not done right, it can be a dangerous item.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience?
And on to our next one on the agenda, which is Chief Rockchester.
The issue has downs, not actually exactly all I wanted to speak about. Ultimately, it was just to bring you guys up today. We did receive approval by today from PERF that our applicant, Chris Baker, was approved, so we're looking at getting him started on April fifteenth. He'll be starting on the department, so congratulations to him. We will have another position open with the retirement of John Martin and then Chris fills the position left by Assistant Chief Edweller. We did take applications, they ended on Friday. We did receive twenty-four applicants. Actually, it's kind of down a little bit this year, I'm not sure what the deal is. But twenty-one of those twenty-four are new applicants to the department, so we'll be holding some testing in May and I'll get those dates out to you guys. We'd love to see you guys come and watch and actually go through some of the testing and see how we go about selecting our personnel. What's on your agenda as far as the appointment of a captain? I'm not prepared to appoint anyone at this point. I can tell you that I did receive eight resumes from current members of the fire department that are interested in that. I've not had a chance to sit down with my other command staff and review that, so that's where I'm at. But because the agendas were sent out so, so early and stuff, I just got it on me just in case something was, did come up.
This question's got, are there any?
I haven't seen any pictures yet, so I know that was a question that Board of Works had. Actually, if you go to the company's website that's building it, and I'll get it out to you guys, they have an in, under constructions place and you can actually go on, log in each, each week or each, I think each, each week they have, they show pictures of how the truck is coming along, down the line and stuff. So I'll get that out to you guys.
Right now, there's nothing on there. I'll, I'll just check. Thanks, Scott. Thank you. Police chief, Stacy Chastain.
I just wanted to add that even on the K nine program, Krieger and Jordan have finished their training. They have started patrol two weeks now. And as far as the training cost, we're a little over halfway raising the money that we were looking at paying for trainings, we're a little over halfway of contributions. Again, I usually get some in every day, so hopefully we'll get that taken care of fairly quickly. And I do want to thank everybody that has donated to, to the K nine program so far. Also, we started a new K nine software program during all this and each time he's deployed, Krieger's deployed, Jordan's going to do an incident report, so if you're, whatever, want to take a look at one of those to see what he does, when he's deployed. In the last couple of weeks, I don't know the exact number, but he's been deployed several times, not to any outside agencies, but to our agency and his self-initiation deploying Krieger on vehicle stops and that kind of stuff. So he is working, he's out there, you don't, you just see him, he's got them. And we do have all the equipment needed at this point for his deployment, so we don't need any of that. Right now, we're just trying to get the training paid for. Also, we, we have a new hired that was approved from PERF today as well. His prospective start date is going to be April twenty-second and he will be replacing the current opening that we have right now. We did too, just end the application process on the twenty-fifth of March. We received twenty-eight applica, applications. Our agility test is this Saturday morning at eight o'clock at the high school field house. If you folks would like to come and take a look at that, but right now, we have, we showed twenty-eight applicants right now. I think there's sixteen, maybe fifteen or sixteen that live in the K account.
You should talk to her about her, Krieger, he's had some success, right?
Yes, yeah, during vehicle stops and such, he's had several successes in his deployments. You have any questions?
Thank you, Stacy.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We discussed this a little bit last month, we touched on it, it was the hospital campaign.
I know that last time you, people were fairly supportive, assuming that that's still the case. While thinking of this, we'll, further, I would, I would like to pose that we do do the campaign house, Mark, that we do, you know, name of room or outfit or room or whatever that they're calling it. It's not for that reason, but it's a nice whole reach. And at one point, we talked about, you know, five, for five years, five thousand. I'd rather us do, in a shorter period of time, I'd rather us do it in a period of two or three years, I'd rather limit it to the timeframe that we're still in office. The one thing I never would allow to hear anybody beyond that. And, and secondly, I did forward to you some information that Richard had provided us or provided me, and it's not like we can't afford it. We have, this, this year, we're projected to receive around three hundred and seventy-four plus thousand dollars a year into our edup fund because the courthouse bonds and mortgages because the courthouse bonds and mortgages have been paid off, right?
Yes.
And so, you know, where we were, some of that money was always going to pay that other first. And we have roughly two hundred thousand, round numbers, in our account now. So my, my thought is that we should do it most three years, eighty-five, eighty-five and eight. Or in a two-year period, you know, twelve-five and twelve-five would be my recommendation. I don't know what Russ, you think about that? If you're willing to do twenty-five, I guess that's the first question. Is that, is that something that you have some difficulty with?
Yeah, I, I like your point of if the mayor could go along with this, that we do make that contribution within the time of our council. So we're not putting it off on the council.
You agree with that, Gary?
I am. I'd rather see you do it in two years, even though it's, you know, taken care of. I would like to also have the sponsor of the one room, the city of Greensburg's name, right? On it, so people of Greensburg knows that we contribute.
Yeah, I, I think that's, yeah, like, we can do that, that's my thought.
And I'd like to emphasize that it is added money, economic development. Anybody who is involved in economic development understands why the hospital is enlarging. It's a plus for this community. It is a, another notch on the column when people rank you for your community. What type of hospital do you have? What's the quality? Doctors, the staff, the schools, you know? I think we have a good hospital. Maybe have someone now to find additional doctors to bring into Greensburg. Our schools have been A-rated, grade A, or grade A. And I think we need to keep things going. Things go up and up, break some day, and when they do, Greensburg is the place to choose. The hospital is just another good reason for doing Greensburg.
Yeah, it's part of the infrastructure here. Well, no, I would, I would move that we would join this campaign at the level of twenty-five thousand, twelve thousand five hundred this year, two thousand thirteen, and again, two thousand fourteen using added funds. Be my, my recommendation, my motion.
So I got it. Okay, and before we vote for discussion, currently, our, what we're receiving now this year is around thirteen thousand a month. So we're getting a month from the added. We're in good shape on that. And I think continually increase the amount that we have, the added funding, the added dollars as well. Is there, are there in the audience who'd like to speak on this hearing? None then? Continue to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote same side. I do have a proclamation for this month as well. I have sent a letter on behalf of Military Children. And this, once again, is going to be the office of the mayor. Whereas thousands of brave Americans have demonstrated their courage and commitment to freedom by serving the armed forces of the United States of America, enacted duty posts in Afghanistan, Iraq, and around the world. And whereas more than twenty-one thousand Indiana's children and youth have been directly affected by the military deployment of at least one parent. And whereas these children and youth are a source of pride and honor to us all. And it is only fitting that we take time to recognize their contributions, celebrate their spirit, and let our men and women in uniform know that while they are taking care of us, we are taking care of their children and youth. And whereas the recognition of the month of the military child will allow us to pay tribute to military children and youth for their commitment, their struggles, and their unconditional support of our troops. Because when parents serve in, serve in the military, their kids are heroes too. And whereas a month-long salute to military children and youth all will encourage the local community support to provide direct support to military children and families. Therefore, I, Gary, here at City of Greensburg, do hereby proclaim the month of April two thousand thirteen as the month of the military child. Thank you. Write that out to everyone as well.
Regent.
Anybody who has family and friends in the military know there's things going on in North Korea now. I worry my grandsons won't be back in Seattle tomorrow on a submarine, or they still won't be ready to see Japan soon. So we all pray and hope that our military people all around the world continue to be safe. Darryl, would you like to give a report on the Board of Works meeting?
Sure. Just a couple of things. Mark Klosterkemper came to the Board of Works with quotes for uniform. G and K Services out of Indianapolis will be our provider for that. And then also, a gentleman was here from Mueller Infrastructure Network to discuss the replacement of the water meters. That will start in June and will finish up in October of this year. Initially, about fifty-two hundred connections will be made. The cost is around eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars. That money has been accumulating in a fund for capital improvement of the waterworks. And I believe that there will also be an annual fee of thirteen thousand five hundred, basically, from this company for IT services.
That it?
That's it. Thank you.
Does the council receive the TIF list? That's been prioritized by the TIF board. It has not been totally endorsed at this time. Chris is checking on things, making sure that we have to apply to meetings. Or have you been doing that soon? There is a public meeting on April fifteenth, and we're applying for a grant. They are a, for another walking path from, is it the junction of Freeland Road and Bearshell? Is that's Montgomery?
Bearshell and Cassidy or Nightingale, where the sidewalk canyon on the north side of Bearshell, we're applying for a grant to connect that over to the new trail. The county has got awarded transportation enhancement grants in that. It's gonna go along with the west side of the Apache Springs. We're trying to connect that, so that we can, there, there. That's what that's for.
And I don't know for sure. I think council is gonna hear. I'll confirm that tomorrow, let you know. Also, we are, Gary is heading up an ADA public meeting this Wednesday at seven P M.
Six to eight. Six to eight.
Six to eight here at City Hall.
And that's our ADA transition plan. We're pretty together to make sure that our services are available to the public.
This is really for public input?
Yes.
Yes, this is for a public input, on the place.
Do you have a draft address?
No, we don't have a, this is a public input.
In order to draft it.
I attended the mayor's this meeting last week for that matter. And one, one of the very many items and subjects that come up is the Affordable Healthcare Plan. A lot of people are saying that the area insurance program, what's supposed to be in, is going to increase to a pretty ten to twenty percent. There's a lot to it. It truly is. And the penalties are as severe as maybe the cost of the bill. I know there's another meeting scheduled, the I Act for April eleventh, a whole day session on. So, I'm, I'm, Steve Simmons on the Board of Works. He's a local businessman, and he is attending one of the nights. So we're gonna be comparing notes to see what we can come up with. And looking for honestly, especially this year, possibly consulting to lead us through this, make sure we do our thing.
Excuse me, Mayor. I think they already mentioned the Board of Works also agreed to allow Mark Klosterkemper to purchase a used truck. To be used for, Rush, yes.
Currently, our truck is twenty-six years old. It's down. We spent thirty-eight hundred on it. We've got a fifteen hundred dollar truck. So we have limited, he's been limited to a maximum thirty thousand dollars right now. He backed business and provided the truck, so that's where that is.
Segue is a new question. I'm just curious, I know that our trash ordinance is supposed to be effective this month. How is that implementation?
Mark, so can we report on that, please?
We can ask for one day. Today's the first day that it actually went and drove back. Notifications went out as quick as we could get the mailing list compiled. We notified a large majority of the commercial accounts. We spoke with the two people, the truck truck, on a regular basis to verify where we were picking up trash and where we weren't. We notified those people. We notified all of the multi-happen units. Had a lot of phone calls for the last ten days or so. And I think, I talked to Bob about his today. He had, I don't know, there's about four or five that were questionable. We found one business that we actually missed. Another issue came up since then. When we were doing our research, we have, I think there's fourteen places where we have collected trash. I don't know, sometimes we have to God create the urine. And those residences or businesses are not located in the City of Greensburg and do not take city and city taxes. Have not arrived at a decision yet. What kind of handling that?
Well, you know, I got some calls too. I was surprised and disappointed, frankly, that the notice went out like after the middle of March. And it was effective within the two weeks of the notice. I, I guess I would have thought and hoped this passing this first of December, that we would have had a much better implementation for the businesses and the places that had to change. We knew this was going, we, to be accountable, but this was going to be substantive and disruptive. And I just, I hoped, would have hoped that we could have given a delayed implementation of it to give people time to adjust to it. And they just didn't really have much time to adjust to, at least people that I've heard from. So disappointed in that. As far as the fourteen places south side of City of Greensburg, well, I think we let them down easy, but we had to let them down.
Well, the, a lot of places were, some, some wanted to go to them, a business, and offer their services. So they would have trash picked up. They wouldn't like we just pulled the rug out of the mudroom and all that, and then what they were giving.
Yeah, it just was a short time for them to make the, that's all I'm saying. I just, because we had asked for this to be implemented the past of December, we knew it was gonna be something, so let's not implement it till March. For whatever reasons, word didn't get out. And then when the letter arrives, it's just pretty short notice. And I can understand why people were upset. And so I got in here and thought, I, I just would have, you know.
What more we could do? The newspaper and radio both published it once, and we went to the radio with the newspaper, pretending the radio station would be discussing it again. And then they were sent letters, correct, Mark?
I just would have wanted the letters to go out.
Were you gonna part of the jury or? I don't know if Donald's still here or not.
I, I understand. I know, I know there's a lot of, I know there's a lot of implementation problems. My point is, when it did, when I saw nothing happening in December, Chris was okay. I said something the first of January.
There.
And it should have been, in my opinion, it should have been started immediately because it was gonna take some time. And it was needed to give people time to adjust. That's all I'm saying. And it's done. It's being implemented. People are doing an adjust to it as best they can. I, I'm just saying, I would have, I was disappointed that the businesses didn't get enough, didn't get a little bit more notice, and we could have avoided a lot of, some of the grief. Not necessarily all of it, but a few words doesn't, gets that, so. Know how it went.
Well, next time we change something, maybe we should go to them, have a sit-down meeting with each and every company, business, and hopefully we can guide them through it. Unless we can do it better than what we, what it was now. Anything else?
Oh, sir.
It's on the trash picker. I got one of the notices. Terry, look at my place. I'll start a fortune in that place. Try to keep it, look into it for your sake. Does it look good, Terry? One oh eight. I get comments all the time. I took the trees down there. The city wouldn't have blew it. All over and falling down on the road all the time. I mean, all this, maybe this letter.
Sir, would you like, would you like?
I paid my taxes.
Can you state your name, please, sir?
Tom Pete's. And I paid two thousand two hundred and seventy-four dollars last year in tax, and they keep going up. And then I get a notice like this. I don't know where you come up with the three units. Does anybody have an idea where that three units come from? Listen.
Three units or five trails.
Where do they come up with those numbers?
I don't know.
What I'm trying to say, where is that one unit put up more damn trash than a trail puts out?
I, I don't know where, what you're talking about, so I.
And for rental car.
That's, that's what you, you brought the right thing up. They didn't give us much notice. And that was really aggravating. I get the damn thing, and the back two units is gonna wash and dry hook up. Ain't no bigger than a trail would be. The front unit's only about five hundred and fifty square feet, real little bit of thing. If you're gonna do that to me, this is the first year I could make money on it. Cause it's the first year I've been able to rent three of them. Right now, I only got one rented out. And I lost money on it. I've had it now eight years, and I have never made money, cause I've been investing in it. Trying to get it looking nice for Greensburg. I don't like this trash and this stuff. Don't you think it looks good? I've got a lot of comments on it. And, and I get something like this. After all that work I've done, trying to make it look nice and everything. I will shut that front unit down if that's what you want. I'll make storage out of it. And it'd be two units in it.
That's you're not always being, those are businesses, I mean, credit.
It's not a business. I tried to get a business loan on it. The bank says, that's an investment. I said, hey, they're gonna call into the business. Why is it a business and I can't get a business loan? It's not a business.
And why are you being taxed two percent?
I'm taxed to death on it. And he just said, these people outside are dying, paying the taxes and getting by. I've been paying them. And your street department comes up there and picks up stuff, and I got the water bill? You never got a late time. I didn't pay that. I paid the gas bill. I paid the taxes. I paid twenty-two seventy-four last year. And it'll probably go up again. I paid fifteen hundred dollars insurance. Add that up and see what that comes to a month. I ain't making nothing.
But the property all around it, they're just single dwellings. Don't pay anywhere near the taxes that we're paying on that home.
I just think it's, for, for what the little unit is on the front, is, you can't even, it's just a place to stay. It's not a place to live.
Sir, what's the address you're?
One oh eight East Washington Street. It's really three addresses. That's the one they put on here. But like I said, that first unit don't, it's just nothing. The back two's the only one, and I can't keep them. I have never rented three of them at one time. I'm lucky to just get two of them out. Time I get one rented, somebody's moving. I only got one rented out. And, and they got two kids, and they expect a nun. And they said, this is last year. We're gonna be renting, cause we ain't got, I said, I understand. They said, you're right. That ain't big enough for that many kids.
Is that the first place west of the Duke building? Is that the first place west of the Duke building?
No, it's right by the library. It's a green colored house.
Terry can tell you more about it. Just down from Terry, yes?
It's just by the Barbara Wright Nursing Room.
Close to the representative where Don Wright used to live?
I think that's who it was, but...
He passed away a couple of years ago.
Jerry... I work with him there, lives right next to me there, the yellow house.
One oh eighty's what's on that square.
Ten away.
There's a green church, and then there's a house, and a house, and then there's our...
Like a new house there.
Yes.
But I have Mr. Herbert here in town, does my taxes. And I can take anyone down at any time. You can call him and ask him what I made on it, and he'll tell you. He didn't make nothing on that thing because he'd been invested so much in it. But I want it nice. I don't want junky, trashy looking stuff. I see too much of it in town.
There's some trash in the backyard like the other places around here do. Go in the backyards, in the alleys, and look at all the trash people just throw back.
I do have a mattress and stuff. I didn't know he was doing that because I did not get a letter that didn't pick up furniture. Because it used to did pick up stuff, seat chairs and stuff laid out, but I guess they don't do it no more. I will get that out of there. I just, my truck's broke down. I ain't got nobody else to haul it. It's up to me to take care of that. So, I'm going to get it out of there.
And sir, really, I understand what you're saying, but we were never... The city was never supposed to pick up furniture, mattresses, things like this. We're supposed to just keep bagged trash away. We did try to keep the city clean.
Yeah.
And, you know, we're probably not going to have some sort of policy where no trash left.
But you see where I'm coming from. I've got two units back there. It's, wouldn't be as big as the trailer. And the front is nothing. And I will shut it down if that's what you want.
No, we don't want you to shut that.
Well, I'm not going to pay somebody else coming in because that's going to cost me extra, and I'm already paying too much, you know, to keep up everything. I paid your taxes, and I never late with my taxes.
I don't know if it needs to be going on my square footage of apartments.